Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Tuesday, April 16th, Board of Selectmen meeting. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have our full board sitting this evening, so I'll ask for, to reorganize the board. So, if there are any motions, discussion.
I have a question.
Sure.
Can somebody tell me what the different positions are responsible for? Like, I couldn't find anything in mind.
So, the chair sets the agenda with the, with the town administrator. The vice chair would be the person to run a meeting if the chair is not there. And back in the old days, the secretary would take notes if we didn't have a recorder for the meeting. But we have, Amy does the meetings, so sometimes it might be the workshops or other sessions.
Okay.
So those are the responsibilities. Everyone's jumping.
I'm okay to leave it where it is. If somebody else would like to be vice chair, that's also fine with me. I have a very busy year coming up, and I would be happy to be secretary or, or nothing. A simple board member.
A simple board member.
If anybody is interested.
Right. I've always said I'll do whatever the board needs me to do. I don't have aspirations to be the chair. I don't, it's a lot of work, we know that. But I don't mind doing it, but it's not, I don't need, I don't need it to feel important, I don't need it to be here, I don't need it to participate. As always, you know, whatever the preference of the board is, is what the, what it is. I don't feel that it gives any more or any less to the roles in which we, we bring to the table. So whatever the desire is of the board.
So, and I'm obviously somewhat new at this process, but so generally, does it change occasionally, or does it stay the way it is until?
It's, you know, it's different every year with different personalities. Back in the day, it used to be whoever was there last year, they would become the chair, so that it kind of was on a rotating basis. There are some years that we had the same chair for a longer run versus a yearly change, you know.
I have no aspirations to be chair.
And I certainly, I don't have enough procedural knowledge to even do that, but I'm just wondering whether or not, you know, if there's a benefit or not a benefit to, you know, having a change, or, you know, do folks generally prefer to keep it the way it is? I mean, I don't really know, but.
Every board's different, and, yeah, so it doesn't, there is no, there is no answer. There's no right or wrong answer.
Does it, I mean, does anybody have any thoughts on that? I mean, I, I mean.
My, like I said, my question was, is, I didn't even, I mean, we see every day what the chair does, the vice chair, the secretary, but I didn't even know what the responsibility is, per se. I know Jen puts in a lot of time with setting the agenda, getting things posted, working with town employees. I didn't know if there was any more to that than what we see, technically.
With the absence of a town administrator, there was tons. Right, tons to be done. With a town administrator and interim, it lessens that burden, but you do, as a chair, you will get texts and phone calls that you return on your lunch break. You know, conversations to be had throughout the week on different things. So as a chair, it's not just setting the agenda, but all of the other pieces that go in. I try to get here once a week to sit down with Bill and go over just where we are, what's going on in town. And any member can do that. It doesn't have to be, it should be everybody doing that. So with a town administrator, it makes the chair's job a bit easier. Not a bit, a lot easier.
Right.
So, but it, but as I'll say, as a chair, you know, I'll say maybe, you know, corresponding via email, being updated on certain things before it gets to the table at a meeting is being dealt with as a chair. So, that is where that is. I hope that that's an answer.
Right.
Enough to, but there is, I mean, there is conversations that are had during the week.
So those phone calls and conversations, I shift forward to you.
You don't have to. No, it's nice, it's not, you know what, honestly, it's nice, like, you're looped in on some other things that I'm not, my, my background doesn't give me as much knowledge as, as you have. So therefore, you taking the lead on some of those things, saying Erica is looped in on this, that, that gives me, at least presently, that gives me a level of comfort to know that there are some watchful eyes on what's happening.
Right.
Because that's your expertise, and that's what you, you know, you lend to. So sharing the wealth between the members of interests and expertise is, is good. So you know, you don't have to forward those.
Right, yeah, I agree with that.
You know, being linked in, I think, capping and, and touching all of our, our skills is.
Kevin, what is your background? I don't know much about you, I just.
I work in, in the retail manufacturing business. I'm, I run a warehouse manager at a plumbing supply company.
Oh, okay. Not that it matters, I was just curious.
No, that's what I do.
May I make a suggestion?
Sure.
The procedure I've, I've seen in other places is, one of the members nominates someone to be chair, and if there's no other nominations, then by voice vote, you choose that person.
That's what we typically do, we're just dancing right now.
Nominations don't require a second. So.
Do you have any opinion?
I don't know, I mean. I don't know, I haven't, I guess I'm undecided as to what I'm, my opinion is at the moment.
I mean, I have to say that I would like to see, Ms. Blake, if you had time to do that job, to, to become the, the chair.
I appreciate that. I don't have as much time as I think Jen does to being here. I don't know if I would require as much time now with having the town administrator, because Jen has put in a ton of hours with us not having a town administrator. She's been in this office a lot more than I have. I wouldn't have a problem with being the chair, but I mean, I would ask for a lot of support, so I don't know if it would be fair for me to take that role, so.
Is that a nomination?
Yes, I would, I would, I would absolutely nominate her, because I think there are enough, you know, the rest of us to fill in gaps that need to be filled in to be able, to have you facilitate it. That's what I believe.
And I shall warn you, I am a facilitator and a delegator.
Well, that's good. We're all in this together, and I think if you split up the pie a little bit, it's a lot easier to swallow.
Right, absolutely. You know, we have done a little bit of that. With not having a town administrator, we did do that a little bit, not as much as we probably should have, but we did start to do that, so.
All right, so there is a nomination for Erica Blake to be the chair. So all those in favor? Do I need a second? No? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Kevin, I'll remember this, by the way.
So I'm gonna, you are now the new chair, so I'm gonna have you take over here, and then you'll have to do the rest of the nominations.
Oh, okay.
Unless you want to defer me to do them. Yeah, you do, because Tim likes the chairs sitting right in front. Unless we can wait, unless you wanna just do the rest. Unless we do the, the vice chair and the secretary, and then rearrange.
Right. So we're gonna do a nomination like we typically do?
Yep, so is there a nomination for vice chair?
Andrew, does that interest you at all?
Right now, my work schedule is not very conducive for evenings, so I don't feel like I could dedicate enough or the right amount of time that that position would require. So I don't feel like I could do that at the ti, at this time.
I'd like to nominate Jen Dean for vice chair.
Second. Now you can say all those in favor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Marty doing a bad job.
And then.
Are you comfortable staying as secretary?
Um, it makes no difference, I mean, yeah.
So I'll nominate Andrew as secretary.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So you can pick, you want Tommy's seat or my seat? Then I'll shift one way or the other.
It's easier if I just.
The gavel's in the back, if you wanna bring it out. I don't bring it out. It's, um, right by the computer.
Thank you, Kevin.
You may wanna raise that seat, I just keep it low, 'cause I'm short.
That's fine.
So Erica, um, some of the items here are follow-ups. The next item is the moderator, and she had sent her email to be put on the agenda today.
Okay.
So I can help you through the agenda today.
Absolutely. Jackie?
Yep. Ready for our vice chair?
Congratulations.
Thanks, you too.
Is that email in here, that's called?
No, she just asked.
Yeah, I just asked to be put on the agenda.
Okay.
I just wanted to come in and introduce myself, to anybody watching at home, anybody here in the room who didn't know me. My name is Jackie Lima, and I was elected on April 1st as the new town moderator. So I wanted to thank everybody for coming out and voting. I'm excited to start this new role, and I just wanted to invite everybody to the annual town meeting. Reiterate, it's gonna be Monday, May 13th, at 7:00 PM. And there's no special meeting before that, a few people have asked me, sometimes we have the special meeting ahead of time, there is not, so it would just be at 7:00 PM. I'd like to remind everybody to, although the meeting starts at 7:00, please come a little bit early, we have to check you in. The town clerk and the registrars, check everybody in, and if you remember from last year, the line kind of gets long and out the door. We've had some good attendance, which is wonderful, but it does take some time to get everybody checked in. So if we wanna begin the meeting promptly at 7:00, I would encourage everybody to get there a little bit earlier. I was able to come in this week, and I met with the town clerk and Bill, the interim town administrator. And with the change of administrators, I just wanted to make sure, I think the conversation happened after Bill had left the room between the town clerk and I. There are things that need to take place before the meeting can happen, they're not the town clerk's responsibility, they're not my responsibility, so just wanna make sure that the Board of Selectmen, through the town administrator, has secured MES for the evening. The cable committee has been communicated with, and that they'll be on site. Police details have been arranged. Justin, the town accountant, or representative from his firm, will be present that night. And Legal was here, so I did confirm with the legal team, they said that a representative would be there that night as well. So I just wanted to make sure to go on record, those are not my responsibilities, not the clerk's responsibilities, but very important, and I don't want them to fall through the cracks. I also had requested that an email account be set up for the town moderator last week. I was told that, Bill, you needed to approve that?
If so, it's news to me, but if it needs to be approved, I'll approve it.
Okay.
No, I don't think it was through Bill, I think it's a discussion that's gonna be had in our budget, because each account is $30 a month.
Okay.
For each email. And so if we were looking at CM Geeks to see what that looks like, as far as the budget, and, and opening for every department to have an email, some just have, like, the chair has an email versus others, so that's something that's on the agenda to look at for the budgeting issues. And CM Geeks for reducing the price.
Okay, I'm a one-man, one-man show, I only need one, and there's not one currently set up. I think it is important for communications between town boards, town officials, record retention, I'm not gonna, I'm not comfortable using my personal email address. So, I mean, I need that set up, there needs to be a moderator@MillvilleMass.org email account, so whoever needs to approve that, I'd requested that early last week. I've been in communication, today the state reached out to me through the town clerk, she was forwarding it to my personal email, you know, there's, Legal gave me their card to follow up with a few things with them. I don't wanna use my personal email, that's not appropriate.
Did, um, did the former Les Davis?
He did not.
He did not, okay.
I met with him this weekend, he did not have one.
Okay, I just remember saying.
That shouldn't be an issue.
Well, I mean, I've been waiting for, for a week now, so it kind of is an issue, so. And with the meeting, you know, less than a month away, there's some correspondence that needs to go back and forth to iron things out, so. Okay, so then I just wanted to talk a little bit about the process leading up to town meeting. So obviously, as you guys are aware, the finance committee is required to issue their report of recommendations based on the budget that the Board of Selectmen pulled together. I have a feeling this year that the Board of Selectmen and the finance committee may have different opinions on certain line items going into it, which is what this is all about, right? I mean, it's, and then it's up to the people to vote and appropriate. The only thing I would ask is that, and I'm asking this of the finance committee as well, that your two boards work together. It's not fair to the townspeople to have two budgets presented, or, you know, confusing, conflicting documents. I really think that, in, in my opinion, facilitating this meeting and moderating this meeting is gonna run much smoother if you guys can iron through some of the line items. I've watched both meetings, I've watched both committees. There are still a lot of differences, in my opinion, that are like contractual, or that should, if you guys are in the same room, be able to be worked out and agreed upon. Certainly not every line item, I totally get that. But I think, in my opinion, it's very important for the townspeople to be able to come into a meeting and know that there has been some cooperation between the two boards. So as the facilitator of that meeting, that's what I'm asking of both of the boards.
There has been, by the way.
Okay.
So we have been going back and forth in the last couple of weeks.
There is, I'll share with the chair, there is an email that came today from the chair of the FinCom.
Right, I saw that one.
Yes, you were looped in, so.
Yeah, I saw that one, so there is correspondence going on some words.
Great, I think a joint meeting, though, is probably in order to, to iron some of that out, so I hope for the townspeople that that happens. Going into town meeting, it'll be my responsibility to present the budget to the townspeople. We're not gonna have two different versions of the budget, there will be one budget that's presented, okay? So I just wanna make sure that people are clear, I think last year there was some confusion in terms of an override budget, a not override budget, and I've heard a lot of talk this year, if there'll be a Board of Selectmen budget and a FinCom budget. There will not. Legally, there can be, there is to be one budget presented, and that will be the goal for this year. That will be what happens this year, is that there will be one budget. The other thing, and again, I'm asking this of FinCom, that if your board wishes to pass anything out in the back of the room, or to do any sort of presentation, those materials need to be submitted to me via email, I don't have an email account, but hopefully I do, no later than Wednesday, May 8th, at midnight. So that'll be the evening of the second finance committee public hearing. Their second public hearing is May 8th, so any changes that are brought to their attention that night, the deadline will be midnight, May 8th. That means I'm gonna require some assistance from somebody at Town Hall or the administrator on Thursday, May 9th. That'll be the only business day, other than Monday, the day of the town meeting, which I assume might be hectic here anyway. So I will approve those things Thursday morning, and then we'll need to get them printed. That would be the same thing if there's any sort of PowerPoint presentations or anything like that, it all needs to be emailed in. Any materials, whether it's to be passed out or, or a presentation, needs to be directly related to the articles. We can't be having, you know, big, long presentations about things that are irrelevant. It really needs to fit within the four corners of the article that it pertains to. The other thing that I was gonna ask the board is, I, it seems as though you guys will finalize the warrant on the 22nd, is that correct, based on the postings outside?
Twenty, uh, 22nd's Monday.
We have Thursday and Monday.
Yeah, Thursday and Monday.
It could be done Thursday, but we have Monday, just in case.
Okay. I was just gonna say, when that is finalized, that gets, that will get emailed to me as well, the final copy of the warrant. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, to my, to my new email account. And then the only other thing that I wanted to ask from the board is there, is there anything that you would like me to consider? Either prior to the meeting or at the meeting, things that worked well, things that don't work well, if you can think of anything now, if you wanna send me an email. I mean, I'm, I'm excited at the opportunity of, you know, improving the process, I think there are a lot of things that were working well with the process, but I'm happy to take input from anybody on this board, finance committee, town administrators, the general public, if anybody, you know, thinks of anything that they liked, that they didn't like, suggestions, please reach out and let me know. Any suggestions, Bill? You've been around, you seem like you have something.
No, not at this point. I do have, later in this meeting, I, I will distribute a draft of the warrant.
Okay.
For the selectmen to look at before Thursday night.
Okay.
Once the selectmen have it, make sure you get a copy of it as well, but understand it's a draft.
Absolutely. Hope that's helpful.
This group blesses it.
Okay, and finance committee will get a copy of that as well?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause I know, you know, they're concerned about the budget, but I think if there are other financial articles, they'll need to make recommendations on those as well.
Right. My first responsibility is to the Board of Selectmen.
Yep.
They get things first tomorrow. I will forward to you and to the Chair of the Finance Committee a copy of the draft.
That's great.
Understanding there's some formatting and things to do, and that sort of thing.
Anything else?
That's it.
All right, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. So now we're going to, did everybody have a chance to look at the meeting minutes? Kevin, you did not for April 2nd, I don't think you were on those minutes anyway.
Not a signature.
So did everybody else look at the minutes, any? Any issues?
No, Amy.
Fix your spelling.
Motion to accept the meeting minutes for April 2nd?
移到
2nd?
2nd.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have to abstain? Oh, here, I'm abstaining. All right. So correspondence, we have a...
So this, we received the email from KP about the new policy. Andrew had reached out to KP, which I forward that response to everybody.
Okay.
So I guess it's a matter of just having a discussion and acceptance.
Andrew, what's your opinion on the email?
Trying to, do we have a copy of the, um, policy in the packet tonight?
It was in your last one, but I have another copy here, I have my copy.
So, um, thank you. So, I did email KP Law, and I did receive a response, they didn't really specify the reasoning behind Section 8, they gave more of an overview of what, um, their opinion was about the whole procedure in general. So I would, I still have my reservations against, or with, the jurisdiction, if it's outside of the jurisdiction of the board, that it'll be handled by the town administrator or department heads. I still have my questions on that, um, side.
And that was on Section 8?
Yes.
Can I see that copy, please? Oh, it's the same one, is it?
Yes.
So I'm just, I'm just curious, if someone comes in to complain about a police officer or a fire individual, why, if that, that's under the police chief, why would we hear complaints on that in a public forum?
Well, I think we can technically, it doesn't mean we have to take any action, but my main concern is, if we can't take any action on it, how would the town administrator take any action on it? It would be directly the police chief in that instance. It wouldn't be the town minister or us in any.
It does say town administrator and/or department heads.
Well, yes, but my thing is, is that the town administrator, and if it's outside of our jurisdiction, it would be also outside of the town administrator's jurisdiction, considering that we hired the town administrator.
Other matters outside of the jurisdiction.
That, that was my whole kind of.
Boards of committees and other matters outside of them.
If we could just edit it to have specific, you know, just a department head of, that would be outside of our jurisdiction, such as the school, the fire chief, and the police chief for certain matters, then I'd be fine with that. I'm just confused on why or how that would work if the town administrator was to handle those complaints that are outside of our jurisdiction.
The, if I might, the general process is, if someone comes to a selectmen's meeting and says, "I'm concerned about item X," then the normal process would be, if it is a town matter, if it's not school or something like that, refer it to the town administrator for research and report back, and if it's, for example, the highway surveyor, and there's a question about that, then the town administrator passes it along to the highway surveyor, and make sure then that there's a response back to the Board of Selectmen.
It's more of a facilitator.
Right. And the administrator generally is kind of the go-between when the selectmen receive a complaint like that, unless it's about the administrator, to report, or take that, find out what's going on, give a report back, and if necessary, bring the appropriate people to a meeting.
I think 8 gives us the opportunity to have the town administrator to facilitate that conversation with those who are elected, because as a board, we don't have any jurisdiction over an elected official, so that if someone came to complain, then as the administrator of the town, they would have to make sure things are being followed through, and that would probably cover those elected individuals, rather than, like, below is the people who do come before us, the boards and the committees. So I take number 8 as our elected officials, our planning board, our park, Veterans Park, highway, town clerk, we don't appoint those, but they would, if there was issues, someone needs to address them.
Right.
As a town operation.
And I think they should've maybe put in facilitator, instead of handling, I mean, it's still the same thing.
Yeah, I mean, and I don't know the answer to this, but if there was a complaint against an elected official, wouldn't the Board of Selectmen still have to handle that complaint to a cer, I mean, obviously with the cooperation of the elected official, or, you know, I'm not sure how it would work out, but wouldn't it be more or less between the elected official and the Board of Selectmen in that instance?
Well, we could delegate it to the town administrator to...
Well, yeah, but my, and my, back to my main point, which was, it says that it's outside of the jurisdiction of the board. So then, what exactly, what departments or positions are outside of our jurisdiction that the town administrator could handle?
Can you read KP's response?
I don't have it with me, unfortunately, but it didn't really cover that, I don't believe, it covered the, that specific instance, it referenced a, um, a procedure that was too strict, and where they went to court a certain school committee and at other community, and it talked about the intent of the procedure, but it didn't, I don't remember if it, I don't think it did specifically on Section 8, it didn't ever explain that in depth.
All right, so anywhere else in these articles, does it cover the personnel? The public forum where complaints are being brought against personnel, is it covered in another line item here, do we know? Because if it is, and we can just strike this and move on, that would be great, but if not.
For what, personnel?
Right. Complaints regarding specific personnel portion, pretty outside. Because that would cover, say, for instance, school department, if somebody came to us, that technically is outside of the jurisdiction.
Yeah.
And I understand. So I think it covers... So I think it covers that, but do we have anywhere else in here complaints regarding specific personnel? Because I have no problem...
I think it's just those last two pieces.
Okay, so why don't we suggest striking out of, outside the jurisdiction? Would that satisfy you?
Um, yeah, can I see it again just?
Because then we can just move on, because this is just, you know, what, we're beating the dead horse here. Does that satisfy everyone else? Does anybody else need to look at this? Do you want to reveal it? Do you need to review?
I just scanned it from the pocket.
Would you guys be okay if we took out that outside of the jurisdiction?
As long as there are another, there are no other circumstances where there are.
Right.
You know, but it seems like there are not.
Because we do need to have that, complaints being specific for personnel boards and committees, we do need to have that coverage in there, but I don't think we definitely need having the outside of the jurisdiction. I mean, I'm not an attorney, but I don't think taking that out is going to do anything in a negative way towards this. Do you want to?
Yeah, that would, I'd be all right with that. Just reading Section 9. I mean, Section 9, excuse me, Section 9 kind of covers complaints, if we could have it encompass more than just administrator. We could have that to maybe encompass town employees.
Well, if we just strike out the, outside of the jurisdiction above, then it would cover it.
Yeah, that works, I guess.
So, do you want to make a motion?
So I make a motion to accept the Board of, Board of Selectmen's meeting public forum policy with the revision to Section 8 to strike outside the jurisdiction of the board.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So, Madam Chair, I can update that, and then we can make that available and may want to, do you want me to loop Diane in and ask her to post it for us?
Yes, that would be good.
Okay.
Where will that be posted on, Brian?
Do we have, we can have it put on the Board of Selectmen page. Yeah, we should put it out, put it outside as well. Okay, so now can we have public forum tonight? Are we good?
As long as, I know the general public hasn't seen it, but as long as everyone's...
Okay, so basically, let's have a public forum tonight.
Good.
In general, what this says is it's a three-minute limit. Basically, don't speak badly about other people in town. That's basically what it says, so.
There's certain personnel.
Right, personnel.
Open meeting things.
We'll stop you if you, we feel you're going to that. Does anybody like to come up for a public forum? Sure.
I was wondering why we haven't had an audit for the town since 2015?
You just come up and say your name and your address, please?
Richard Sanderson, 142 Hill Street, Millville, Mass.
Okay.
Why haven't we had an audit since 2015?
So, from what we have gathered, and Bill Ross has also been doing quite a bit of investigation, we are required by state law to have an audit every three years, and then last year would have been year three, I believe. So we were, we had an audit firm scheduled, they ended up canceling, and then now we're trying to look for another audit firm to come in and do the audit. It is our intent to get at least one year done immediately, and hopefully we can get the other three years done as well.
Will that be available till the public audit is done?
Absolutely.
It's a public, it's a public document when it's done, and just, since you asked the question, we'll be, I'll be reporting on this, but there will be need to be an audit every year.
Right.
Under certain bond covenants.
For the water in this town, to our school, right?
Exactly.
For the school and for the septic tank repair. There has to be an audit every year.
So, procedure will change going forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Andy? Who's going to spell it for us?
No.
I'm Andy. Kobadish, 42th Street, Millville. I'm here tonight regarding the Memorial Day Committee, and thank you for letting me speak. I brought with me tonight two more volunteers. They need to be appointed. Appointed by the selectmen. And also, I want to apologize to Kevin, our new selectmen, for not getting back to him. Kevin, you contacted our person who's starting up the...
That's correct.
Yes, Phil Gomes, and we definitely want you on the committee.
Outstanding.
And you'll also have to be appointed.
Sounds good.
Okay, so I have two women with me tonight. Ian and Sharon, if you both want to come up and introduce yourselves.
Do you want to take this out of order? It's under Old Business.
So, before we do the appointments, I'm going to take Old Business.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Out of order here, because we have a Memorial Day Committee appointments. You can come up, we're going to take it out of order. We're going to take 8D.
Sorry about that.
So you guys don't have to come back up, so we can do an appointment, so.
Aye. Yes, I need to talk to you, too.
So Pam sent the email this week asking for it to be placed on, and offered the two names, because they were in conversation with Ann and Sharon, and I know Kevin was interested. So it would, you can go ahead, but we did receive that correspondence.
Okay, I talked to the chief this morning in quick length, and I was informed that we have to be appointed before we have our first official meeting.
Okay.
And I was, even to that fact, I didn't know. And I do apologize, so I have these women coming tonight, and I wanted to speak with Kevin also. I did set up a meeting for the 22nd of April, Monday, at the Millville Fire Station at 6:00, for our committee to meet, once we become a committee. And so in order to have this meeting take place with all of us, we have to be appointed.
Right.
And that's why, that's basically why I'm here.
Okay.
Phil Gomes is, is in charge of the committee, and she couldn't be here tonight, but she and I have already been appointed.
All right.
We haven't been sworn in yet.
Right.
But we've been appointed.
Okay.
But there are three members now that do need to be appointed.
And what is your name?
Sharon Shalinski.
Sorry? And?
Ian DeAnkor.
And Kevin?
Kevin Saret.
Anybody want to make the appointment?
So I make a motion to appoint Ian DeAnkor, Sharon Shalinski, and Kevin Saret to the Memorial Day Committee.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, I can vote on theirs, right?
It's all one.
It's all one, save abstaining.
You don't get paid, you don't get paid this.
Very, very few. Not breaking any laws.
Four ayes and one abstain? Thank you.
Thank you all for stepping up and doing it, and I know you've been a great contributor on a lot of things that's been in town, and I need to talk to you, so we'll schedule a, you don't have to stick around, but I can message you later if you want.
Now, two quick things. One, one is, and I know you know this, be sure you post your agenda with the town clerk, and she'll post it before the 22nd. That actually has to be done, that's a Monday?
Thursday.
That'll have to be done Thursday. So the agenda needs to be posted by Thursday to meet the open meeting law, and before you can vote at a meeting, you need to stop into the town clerk's office and get sworn in. And she's open, I think she's here tomorrow night, otherwise she's here.
I don't think she's here on Wednesdays, just nine to one, but you can call for an appointment.
Kevin, I don't think you have to get sworn in again.
No, you'll need to.
You'll need to get sworn in and do that again, yep. And Pam, if you need help with the posting? Just let me know.
Thank you.
Just didn't want you to get followed up on your first meeting.
No, I'm glad you mentioned that, because...
I can send you a template, and then you can plug it in your...
But we need to be sworn in before we make up this agenda?
Yeah, no, you can make up the agenda, you just can't vote at a meeting until you're sworn in.
Thank you. Anybody else? We'll move on to the next item, five, correspondence, which we already just...
Yep.
We did prepare that.
Yep, it's my new business.
All right, new business. So, the Town Administrator Search Committee did a great job. They brought forward some good candidates, we selected a candidate, we're in the process of negotiating, so now at this point in time, we can vote to dissolve the Town Administrator Search Committee. Anybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion to dissolve the Town Administrator Search Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We're waiting on the next one. We don't have them all in.
Okay, so 7B, we're going to skip until our next meeting.
I did request two additional proposals, and one I didn't get a resp, didn't even call me back, the other one, I sent the information at their request, and they haven't responded. And Sherry followed up today, and I don't know where that stays.
Yeah, and she emailed me, or texted me, and said that they had no paperwork had come in yet on that.
Right, so I don't know if they're going to respond or not, but...
We're hoping for a lower maintenance, lower price, but I don't know if that's...
Is this, the request that you put in, was it just for certain?
It was based upon the items that were in the quest from Kansas.
Okay, okay. All right, 7C, on 18, so do you want to take that one down?
Sure. So as you can tell, there's a sample of acknowledgement from the 2017 report, and then in the past, we've always had those people of our community who has passed, and we kind of, we, we recognize them, so last year there was three. So in 2018, we have a list here, the only one, I've got to check on the handwritten one, because I think that was 18, and the wrong date was put there. I'm going to check on that. But those are all the individuals who have passed within town. Mrs. Remlod would be the one, and then, let me just double-check on our former police chief. So if it's a matter of if the board wishes to do it again in a similar fashion, or if there's a different format, or...
And this goes into the annual report?
Yes.
Would it be all of these names, or just the selected?
No, it's just, it's just that one.
That does public service?
Yeah, so that is June of, January of 18.
So that one, 18?
Yep.
So then it would be two.
It would be two, if we follow the same.
I think it's a nice, I think it's a nice tradition, and we should definitely do it.
Mm-hmm.
I agree.
So we have to take a vote on that, or is it just?
I think a vote would be appropriate.
Okay. Anybody want to make the motion?
And there was no one else there on that list, there were some questions, like I wasn't sure if some individuals might have served on the fire department. I reached out to a few individuals.
So this list has been shared already?
Who's Mr. Walsh?
He was our police chief for numerous years. We have to get those dates and do that up. I did question Mr. Ranslow, Pi Ranslow, but I never got...
He was on the fire department.
Fire department, that's what I thought. I never got full confirmation on that. So it would be those three, then. And I checked out about Mr. Clements, Mrs. Delanoey.
And you've already got responses from the people that you shared the list with, so we have it covered?
Yeah.
So, three?
I mean, I think it's just the, the matter, if you want to just vote, you know, for those who have passed, who have served the town.
Right, right.
It's those three, yeah.
Anybody would like to make a motion?
Make a motion to acknowledge the citizens of Millville who have passed in 2018 into the annual town report as a memorial.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And if I can just say something, the town report budget was cut by half, so it's being done in-house, and so when that comes, I'm hoping that lots of people will come down and volunteer, because as you know, we need to have that report ready for annual town meeting. We'll make an electronic copy available online, so people can do that, but we do need physical copies. The town clerk has a requirement to send those to different agencies, so once everything is in place, there'll be a work session to bind those, just in the plastic.
That's going to be headed up by Audrey Buehler, I did not forget that.
I know, she did say.
She volunteered.
She did, so...
So do we typically print a certain number of copies, or do we take orders, I think?
We, we've never taken orders, not to say that we can't.
Do we print a certain number of copies, is what I'm suggesting, asking, and we just...
I think, I don't know that number, but I know they have them available prior to town meeting to pick them up, and then we always bring some to town meeting.
Right.
For individuals, so find out what that number is.
Yeah, and do we usually pass out every single one? I'm just wondering if we should only print them as requested, if somebody wants a hard copy? Besides the people that actually require a hard copy?
Because you're putting them together yourselves, you probably need to print and assemble more than just those that have been requested, because sure as anything, you'll run out, and then you'll have to do it again, so. It's better to kill a few more trees, I guess.
Yeah.
It's not to say that we couldn't do a simple, like, through the website, a simple, like, I request a copy, and then we have their copy here.
Yeah.
They submit their, their email, then they can be emailed when they're complete for pickup.
Right.
So it's, it's an easy enough, it's a Google form that can be created with their name, their email, and their requesting, that creates right into a spreadsheet, and...
I just think if they're available online, is it necessary to have the hard copies?
Some people...
I know some people like them, I'm just saying, should they request them a hard copy?
We can do it both ways. We can have a request so that we know a base number, and then project from there.
Yeah.
Get a few more than that.
Yeah, of course.
People will, will pick them up at town meeting.
Yeah. All right, on to Old Business, open board positions.
It was printed out, and I emailed her to forward that and post it.
So these are all the positions as of right now?
That she has on her book, yes.
Okay, so right now we have several positions open that need to be filled. I'll just read through them quickly here, and they're also posted online. Board of Assessors, do we only have one?
Oh, that's really...
Oh, three, okay. Board of Assessors is three vacancies.
That's, that's an important position, and we have our town assessor who's doing it. We have Marilyn Matthews, who as of July 1st, her certification is not up to date, and she is not planning on being recertified. She's been helping us out, but that time has come to an end. I spoke to her via the phone, and she's, she's not going to be able to continue, and that's one that, you have to do an online course.
Right.
So technically, the Board of Assessors is three members, if we were to pull our assessor off of that.
So obviously, we really need a lot of help in that area, if anybody's available to come down and help out with that, that would be great. Cable access, one year, I mean, one person, one-year term. Capital planning, is only one for that?
No. Capital program, I think they just...
So it's two, okay. So two for capital planning, two for... So, two for capital planning, two for conservation commission, two for cultural council, and three for planning board.
Now, wasn't one of those.
Planning board.
It's just two, isn't it?
Yeah, it's just two.
There was one, um.
We did the appointment.
You did, well, there was someone elected, wasn't there?
Pam. Pam was elected and Mr., oh, I can't even remember his name.
He was the alternate member, too.
Yeah, he was an alternate.
So, those are positions, we have some listed online as well, so anybody that wants to get involved, that'd be great.
If I might, the Board of, I agree, the Board of Assessors is extremely important. You need to have a full board available on that one, because you can't certify the tax levy or do any of the items of that type until you have at least two on that board. And if you have someone who's not going to get recertified July first, then you only have one and you can't do it.
That's going to cause problems.
That's real important, and there is a class involved with that.
Is it an online class now?
Yes, I believe it is now.
It is online now, and it's an open, well, at least when I, I took it eons ago, it was an online test, and it's an open book test, so.
Are you still certified?
No. I checked to see just for, just in case, but I've been too far removed.
Yeah, okay.
So. It's not, I mean, the class, I don't know if they shortened it, I can't imagine they would, but the class was lengthy. I mean, it was like, you know, two, three hours, like, for like, two months. It was not.
I think the new, new administration said maybe we need to make this more comprehensive, but easier to get done, because a lot of communities were having trouble getting people.
And they only did it so many times a year.
Right.
Do we know when the next date is, or is it just a continuous online?
It must, I.
I think it's continuous now, isn't it?
I didn't look, but assuming.
Yeah, okay. Alright, seven B, Garden Wonders Host Agreement. I haven't gotten any updates on that. Have you had a date last week? Do you have something?
I went through it, and I went through it with the attorney, and I cleaned up all of the updates and so on, and everything appears to be in order on that now.
The only thing is we're missing the payment schedule. And that would be on page two, right at the top.
I thought I saw it in the last draft I saw.
It's not in this one.
Really?
Unless it's somewhere else.
No, it's, notwithstanding a foregoing, upon approval, $20,000.
It talks about an escrow account. I read it yesterday.
It's at the bottom of page two, begins under item three.
Alright, because part two.
It's definitely in the copy I read yesterday.
No, it's here, but it's up here, too. The company agrees to provide the following annual payments. So, it might be just in two spots.
Well, the annual payments and the.
Impacts.
And the $20,000 payments are two different items, okay? So, that's why they're in two different sections. So, now.
And the purpose of number three is to set up those payments in advance upon approval of certain items by the, by the town. And then, it provides that that's, that money's put in escrow until such time as the final.
Retail opens.
Retail opens, and then it becomes part of the town treasury. And so, that's why you could take into account some of that, or all of it, if you want to, as revenue for 2020, because, well, it's, it's in escrow, it's not town money at that point. So, that's, but this, I think this is the final agreement that you wanted. I went through and tried to double-check it. I was not involved in the regulations, but, or the negotiations, excuse me.
As long as the 202020s in there, that's the final one.
Yep. So, I think this is ready to be signed.
Okay. That will.
And.
We'll change the back page.
Did I miss that?
No, we just changed shares tonight.
Oh, sorry about that.
Well.
We can change the back page and get it to you.
Yep.
I might be able to do that before we leave tonight.
That's fine.
If I can find it on the computer.
I don't have my previous notes, so I'm not sure if we did sign contingent, but I think maybe just a motion tonight will be appropriate, just to cover bases.
Yeah.
Because sometimes we'll say, oh, sign pending.
Right.
Lawyer approval.
I think we did.
But I don't have those notes.
We did do that, so.
I think we did too, but.
So, you want to make another motion, then?
To accept.
Now that it's been approved by the lawyer.
Cleaned up and drafted.
Yep.
So, I make a motion to sign the agreement with Garden Wonders as it's amended by town council and town administrator.
Alright, second. All in favor?
Aye.
What we could do, if we can get together with you, or I could get this done and put it out Wednesday, or for Thursday evening.
That's fine.
And then, we'd probably need at least two copies of it with original signatures.
Right.
One for them and one for us. And then, we'll get this sent off to Garden Wonders for their signature.
Do you have an update on their permitting? Have you heard anything, anything new? I know it takes a long time.
I do not tonight.
Alright, any other discussions on that? A new town administrator update. So, we're in the process of negotiations with Mr. Peter Caruso. Might want to say that would be.
Yeah, and he's here tonight.
So, he's here tonight, that's Peter over there. Enjoy it while it lasts. So, very excited to say that Mr. Caruso will bring a lot of good experience to the town and a very strong financial background, so looking forward to him starting with us. And I thank Bill for stepping in for the time being here. Anybody else want to add anything to that? Memorial Day Committee appointments, we took care of. Selectmen's forum.
I just, on April 27th, from 8:30 to 10, I'll hold my monthly office hours here at the town hall, Saturday, April 27th.
Did you get a volunteer for that day?
I did not get a volunteer. It's fine.
I, I'm committed that day.
That's fine.
Okay. So, I have something that day, let me check the time and I'll let you know.
Sure.
Okay, anybody else? Selectmen's forum? Administrator report?
Okay. I put in your packets a memorandum related to annual audit. And I think there's a couple of different issues here that we need to move forward with. First one is a financial audit of the town. And I discovered that, in doing some research and with a phone call from the person who handles, handled the bond issue for Blackstone Millville Regional Schools, and actually handled a small bond issue that the town has with the Clean Water Trust for septic tank repairs, that the covenants and those bond issues require continuing disclosure, which means an audit every year of the financials. And so, there needs to be an audit of the financials of the town on an annual basis in order to meet that continuing disclosure requirement. State law, I believe, does say three years, but you override that with the bond issues. And I also, and I have a call in to Senator Fatman, and he has not had an opportunity to respond, but the research I've done in talking with, with folks at the state level is that legit, the state auditor generally does what are called forensic audits, where they come in and look to see, are you complying with the various laws? Are there any issues there? That will not qualify, if that's what they're going to do, as a financial audit. It won't meet the bond requirements. And so, a suggestion, and this actually was my suggestion, and DLS agrees with it, is the town should seek proposals immediately to do a financial audit. And a thought that I had, and, and they kind of agreed with it, is maybe, maybe do a proposal, but say, give us a quote for one year, and give us a quote for three years. And then, you can see what the comparison is on that. I can tell you, you do not have enough appropriation.
Right.
To do the first year, because almost always, those are much more expensive, because there's a lot of setup and a lot of time. It's also very time-consuming for the staff. And so, we need to keep that in mind as well. But I would suggest that we get an RFP out as soon as possible for that, and then follow up with the state. Because if there is an interest in doing a forensic audit, the results of, and the information received from the financial audit could feed into that, because there will be a management letter. And there will be recommendations on actions the town needs to take to address any issues that come up on the financial side. And then, assuming the state auditor moves forward, they would have the benefit of all of that in order to work on. Audits are public information. Once they're done, they're available to anybody that wants to see them. You are required to submit them to, for continuing disclosure to the bond folks. And in fact, they're a little nervous that there hasn't been one, because they will have to disclose that to the bondholders. But, they're also understanding that there's been some, I won't say issues, but just, not everybody's been here, and they understand some of the issues that have gone on here. And so, now's the time, I believe, to move ahead and do 2018. And as the state wants to forensically look back on those other years, that's something they could do.
Right. So, your call in to Senator Fatman, is it regarding what type of audit was being offered to you by the state?
That's part of it, just to find out what his intention was, because I wasn't entirely clear, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure he came across entirely.
So, for anybody that doesn't know, forensic audit and a financial audit are two different types of audits. A financial audit will come in and look at processes to see if things are being done properly, see if there's anything that's not being done properly, and it will report out. A forensic audit typically comes in and looks basically for fraud. So, they do two different types of audits. So, from what Bill's telling me, the bond covenants need a financial audit.
Exactly.
So, even if the state comes in and offers a free, which we hope they do, forensic audit, that would be great, but it still wouldn't satisfy our bond requirement. So, we'll have to do both.
And I've always taken the position, and I'm sure Peter agrees with this, is you want them to look through a microscope and see everything that's going on. And if there are issues that need to be fixed, you take steps to fix them. And one of the things that can come out of this for Millville is a joint effort, and we heard the moderator talk about this, a joint effort with the finance committee to establish a long-range plan to address some of the financial issues in the community, while keeping in mind that this is a service organization. And there's a level of services you have to provide to citizens. It's just, that's what you're all about, and so, it takes time to work your way through. It took me about four years in my last spot to get things turned around where they were going in the right direction. So, it can take some time to do that. In the meantime, you have to figure out how to keep the ship going. Kind of blunt, but it's true. So, but cooperation and reaching consensus on what the goals are is the most important part of that moving forward. And once you get the results of an audit, you can then really plunge in and see where you go.
Right.
That's my recommendation to you. It'll be up to you to give direction to, move forward with that, if that's what you want to do.
Have you reached out to Powers and Sullivan regarding the three-year versus the one-year?
Uh, no, I have not. I know from experience that the second, third year should be lower.
Right, exactly, but we still need to get.
It's only one way to find out.
Exactly. Okay, so you're still on the path of getting quotes, then?
Uh, you haven't, I don't think you've given specific direction. You wanted to talk about it some more, but if you'd like to move that forward, we can do that.
Yes, absolutely.
I think so. Said earlier.
Alright.
To go out with an RFP, right?
Yep.
Do you have a, an email dialogue with the senator, or are you just still playing phone tag with them?
Playing phone tag.
So, maybe we should change that, so that we can have a, you know, concrete.
Well, I think, I think we need to do the financial anyway.
No, no, regardless of that, but just to kind of.
Communication.
Communication and just have a concrete record of when we emailed them.
Okay, I concur with that. Do that, good idea.
Do you have his email?
Yes. I had a call last week from the DEP Water Division about water issues at the Millville Elementary School. And there's quite a lengthy history. I'm finding multiple pages of, of issues up there. They have, would like to have a meeting with us and with school people on the 24th at 9:30 in the morning, up at their office in Worcester. I did forward that along to Peter, because I'm absolutely positive this is going to carry more than my brief tenure here. When I look back, it's been going on almost since the school was built, years, and shortly thereafter. But there are some, some significant issues up there, at least what I have seen. And with my background and knowledge on water and water treatment, there's serious problems. And they're looking at options, whether it's trying to upgrade the facility there, or maybe run a water main from Blackstone, and they haven't even talked to Blackstone, so I don't know their thoughts on that, or any other issues like that. But, right now, they're, they're using bottled water. So, we can report back to you on the results of that.
Yeah, I'd be interested to see some of that, exactly what the last testing was.
I can get that out to you.
We did, we did quite a go-around with them. And we went exclusively with north, northeast, northwest water systems. We had two people, we had one who installed, and the one, one was maintaining, and one went back to the person who installed it to do it. Mr. Ferrari and Glenn, can't think of his name right now, are very much involved. So, I'd be interested to hear what they have to say about what they're finding, because we usually get an email from them.
And that will say the test results, where it stands.
I haven't seen that.
And I haven't, we haven't had any.
We've gotten the cover page.
But this is in regards of the water quality, this is about the water leak they have, correct?
No, this is about water quality. I can, I will forward to you an email I received from DEP that has two attachments to it. And one of them is, is a lengthy chronology of everything that's been up there and been found, and the other one, I believe, is all the testing over the years.
Right.
I think getting that to the water company, who's, we are paying to, to maintain that. He usually has lots of answers.
Well, they've been invited to the meeting as well, so.
That's the 24th of April or May?
24th of April. In your packet, there's a first draft, and it's draft-only of the town meeting warrant. And I don't expect to go through it tonight, other than to present it to you. It's not on the agenda, but I know you have it on your agenda for the 18th, and so, I wanted you to see where we are so far. Some of it is, in fact, a significant amount of it is cut and paste from last year's warrant, because those things are continuous, most of them. I did spend some time with the town clerk and town council, and a little bit with the moderator on this. One item that, that I added, that I thought you should be made aware of, is there is a state, state law that if the town accepts it, would allow the treasure collector to take a portion of the proceeds from tax sales, put it into a revolving fund that can only be used to pay the future cost of getting property ready for tax sale, and making sure that the titles are good, and then paying the auctioneer and all of that sort of thing. And what that does is save you general fund money. And it provides a source that really gives the treasure collector a resource to move those properties out of the hands of the town, back into the private sector, which is really where they belong. And the treasure collector informed me that last year was the first sale the towns had in apparently many years. And so, there are a fair number of properties still that could be sold. But some of them will require some resources, and may even require land court actions. And so, this would be a way to bring resources to bear, to make that happen. And I think we used it successfully in my past life, and I think it's something that could be done here. And I think we used it successfully in my past life, and I think it's something that could be done here and would encourage, in essence, the sale of that property, because there'd be a way to finance getting ready for it. So, and I did attach a copy of that statute, because I felt somebody's going to say, well, just what does this statute say? So I attached a copy of it for each of you, so you could see that as well.
The only thing I don't see, and some of them are, I might have come in before, but the school has a placeholder item that they need to get to us. They asked the other day about it, and we always have a placeholder for them. And then the other one is the park grant.
Yeah, I just saw that one, so I can get that.
And that one, yeah, that one has been on the list to be addressed for this town meeting. So...
I can get that added in here. And there may be others that I've missed, because I haven't done your town.
Yeah, no.
Town warrant in the past.
I had a list of the placeholders from, yeah, and some of them were, are not even, you know, pertinent at this point, so... And we cleared the one up about Longfellow, the Longfellow Building, so, yeah, it's just the, um, it's actually going to be two for the park grant. One, we'll, we'll talk about that, but it's the Veterans Park.
If you get it to me, I'll make sure it gets on and if we need to revise it for Thursday night.
Trish and the chief were the ones who were working on that grant. It was lengthy. It was a whole day. I wasn't able to go to the meeting out in Amherst. The chief was on the Centennial Committee. So they spearheaded that up. They took that off my plate when we had no town administrator, because we didn't want to lose it. So that was the consensus of this board. So Trish and the chief are really in the know on that.
I will get hold of them in the morning.
And then check with the school for their placeholder one.
All right. And the last thing I have tonight is, unfortunately, I don't believe I'll be able to be here Thursday evening. I have a doctor's appointment in Attleboro at 4:30. And by the time I got done with that and get in the car and drive out here, it's probably going to be 7:30 anyway. And I apologize for that.
That's okay. You gave us your recommendations already, so we can...
And, and that's why, another reason why I wanted you to see the warrant ahead of time and have a chance to see it. And study it before the meeting. And tomorrow, I will forward a copy to the moderator and to...
Can I grab a copy tonight, because I don't have an email address?
Uh, we can make an extra photo. Here, you can have mine. And then I can make myself one. So that's the draft of the warrant, and that's that.
Thank you.
And I'll ask you. And if there's anything, anything major, you've got my phone number, you can give me a call. So I should, I should, hopefully I'm out of the cardiologist's office before 7 o'clock.
Right.
You never know. Okay? That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. So we just need signatures for April 2nd meeting minutes. And we're not doing our landscape contract to meet.
Nope.
Then do you usually just do whatever copy you have in your folder for signatures or a special?
Bill usually has the selectmen folder. And you can use the ones in there, yeah.
What, let's see, you got minutes you need to sign the signatures. There's the minutes. I think the other one that would be required tonight is the garden.
Did we say you were going to update that?
Right, and I'll update that and have it out for you for Thursday night.
Yeah.
And you can sign it then. That one only has the chair signing.
Yeah, so you can have two or three copies, whatever you think, just a back page of copies. We have our next regular scheduled meeting, but then we have our workshop.
Yeah, I know, I was going to ask a question of the workshop, it's like a...
So we have our next regular scheduled meeting from Monday, May 6, 2019. We have two workshops coming up, Thursday night, the 20th, the 18th, and Monday, the 22nd. Are those 6 o'clock or 7?
They are 6.
The workshops are 6 o'clock, the meeting's 7. For the, can I see the Thursday night workshop?
Yeah. The, we added, it was reposted today.
Okay.
With possible TA.
Okay.
Agreement.
All right. So on this one, if we wanted to invite Finance Committee, would we need to make any...
It's too late, it's too late to post for them.
Right, I know it's too late, but could they come just not as a quorum, or, because I know we want them...
They could come down as a quorum, yeah.
All right, so I'll reach out to them and let them know.
The email she sent this afternoon that she looped us both in, there was, I'm trying to find, there was, maybe we should pull that, let's see.
Because I brought them meet, put them sooner rather than later.
Then comes meeting dates, as they stand, is the 23rd and the 25th.
Yeah, because they canceled tomorrow.
So I don't know if we want to post for attendance at either the 23rd or the 25th as our board.
So the 23rd is the Tuesday.
And we should be done on our budget between Thursday and Monday, so we can post it, so that if there's a...
Yeah, I think we should definitely post it, but I would like to meet with them before the 23rd, so I can let them know. They have something, so you're saying add on to theirs, join their meeting, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we can just post that we're, we can post that we're attending that meeting as a quorum.
So what's better for everybody, the 23rd or the 25th?
It doesn't matter. The 23rd is better for me.
Okay.
I can't go on the 25th unless, I can't get there until like 7:30.
So why don't we do the 23rd, then?
What time is it?
6:30.
Yeah, they mean it 6:30.
And I'll reach out to them and let them know that they can join us. 18th and 22nd, just not as a quorum. The 22nd, if they wanted to join in as a quorum.
They could.
We can, we can update that by Thursday. Terrible with the...
Yes. And Sherry has access to all the agendas, because we do a share file on the Google.
Okay. I think that's it.
Erica?
Yes.
How do you sign, so I can get the right name on the signature block?
You could just put Erica Blake.
Okay. No, no middle initial or anything. Okay, that's fine.
Thank you. All right, anybody want to make a motion?
Yep, so I make a motion to enter executive session, only to return to open session to adjourn the meeting per Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, 1 and 2, to conduct, conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union, non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel.
Second, all in favor?
I hope, take some, roll call.
Yep.
To go in or use that kind of session.
You have to do roll, roll. Aye.
Aye.
Now we vote?
Now you go in, and then we, when we come out, then we exit executive session in public, and then we adjourn our meeting.
But we don't have to walk back there. We don't have anything else.
It depends. If anyone's sitting here, we have to come back on here. Sometimes I just stand in the doorway and yell. I'm looking for a motion, and there's usually no one around.
So, but I'm saying for tonight's session, we have to walk back there? We don't have to?
Yeah, yeah. Well, we can kick everyone out quickly. They may want to say hi to Mr. Caruso.
Yeah.